Call to order. A meeting of the Department of Independence District Library Board of Trustees at 6:30. Shall we rise and move forward?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Is this thing on?
Tim's on the ball here.
Jan Gaffney, here.
Dan Green?
Here.
Allison McVann-Kuesling?
Here.
Nancy Moon?
Here.
Marilyn Pomeroy absent.
Anna Rose?
Here.
Chris Shaw?
Here.
Julie here, here.
Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Jan moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Then moved to seconded. Any discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay. Now there is no E, so we go right to yep. Call to the public.
Good evening. Most of you know that we had a book sale on October 2nd out in the parking lot. It was extremely successful even with all the construction out there. And we made over $5,000.
Wow.
From 10, what, to four, I think. Yeah, that was great. So then we took donations on October 6th and we're doing it again on October 20th. Our reading market online is still doing very well. We're discussing whether to have a holiday sale and if so, what format it might take. Our general membership meeting is October the 21st here in this building at 7:00. And I know most of you or all of you, I hope, have seen our newsletter. And this was coordinated by Nancy Moon and her husband. And it's a fabulous information film episode here. Anyway, that's it.
Thanks, Laura. All right, that was great. Five thousand dollars in one day. Okay. I will accept the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items that anyone wants to discuss? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, consent agenda is approved. Okay, library statistics.
Okay, you have your statistical report in front of you at your places. We are seeing an increase in visitors. Circulation is definitely up. We are up to 20,000 items per month for the month of September. Computer users are up, 433 computer users. Information questions, 454. Downloads are up even over October, or I'm sorry, September of 2019 prior to the pandemic. So that's up to 5223. And pre-pandemic, it was 4931. So that's nice to see that we're getting growth there. Wireless users, 2539. Study room usage for up to 57 uses last month. We had 11 children's and teen programs and 13 adult programs. And attendance to the programs has been improving. We're glad to see these numbers growing.
All right. Any discussion about the statistics? They are looking better.
Yes.
Okay, the library director's report.
Okay, I have been continuing to work on the 2022 budget that needs to be approved by the library board prior to December 31st, 2021. I have met with each department head and the library board's staffing committee. The budget is coming together with a goal to have it ready for the board to review and approve at the November 8th meeting. Next item, we have spent the past few weeks onboarding our two new full-time employees, the business and marketing librarian and the head of children's and teen services. The staff has been doing a great job helping each orient these employees to their new roles. And we want to send out a big welcome to David and Stacia. Arlene and I have been discussing a number of building and maintenance projects. The snowplow RFP has been executed and the review of those quotes is on the agenda tonight. We've also been discussing how to deal with an issue with the shed doors, which are only about two years old. While the doors are fiberglass, the core of the door is wood. And the wood inside this core is routing. The panels cannot be replaced because the specific door is out of production. So we reached out to Pella and they will be providing us with a full refund. I was shocked by that, actually. Arlene has been gathering quotes for replacement doors, so in a future meeting, we will be asking to buy doors again.
Yeah, they should last longer than that.
They should last longer than that, yeah. Yeah, I would agree.
If it's meant to be an outdoor door.
It's a door. It was a residential door and now we're looking at a commercial door.
But even if I bought one for my house, I would expect it to last longer than two years.
So we're looking at, it doesn't need to be a really heavy-duty door, but we are looking at something that would be, it doesn't need to be insulated because the building sounds insulated, but we are looking for something that would either be fiberglass with a synthetic core of some kind, or aluminum, or steel. We just don't want it to be heavier than the building itself. In terms of collaborations, Art in the Village on September 18th and 19th was a huge success. It was an opportunity to connect with the community. We provided multiple kids crafts, button making, and answered lots of questions about library services and upcoming programs. Thank you to Sissy Phillips, who is our community relations coordinator and volunteer coordinator, and the library staff and several volunteers for making it such a great weekend. It was really, it was really lovely. I'm going to elaborate on what Laura said about the book sale. Due to the rain, the Friends of Library Outdoor Book Sale had to be moved from September 25th to the rain date on October 2nd. And unexpectedly, Clarkson Road was being repaved that day, but that didn't stop lots of people from attending to buy books and baked goods. And as she said, the Friends made over $5,000 in just one day. And congratulations and thank you for your job well done. We were actually assisted by the construction crew in those sales. The nice woman who was the flagger at the end of the library driveway found out we had a book sale on her break, came and checked it out and bought herself some cookies. And then went back and got on her walkie-talkie and told the entire construction crew that there was a book sale and bake sale, and they all came on their break. So we did have some assistance in PR with our book sale and bake sale. That would have been, I thought everyone would appreciate that additionally.
All right, thanks, Julie. All right, here's regular business. Let's talk about the update of circulation policy.
Okay. So the head circulation has provided documentation of some updates that need to be made to the circulation policy. And they are included in your packet. They are in red and then there is a strike through over the things that he is removing. The first one has to do with children, it said children under the age of 14, which we think must have been a typo. I think it should have said 16, must be accompanied by a parent or guardian applying for library card and the parent's ID is used. We have reworded that to say children under the age of 18 with their own valid driver's, Michigan driver's license or Michigan ID with their current address may acquire a library card without a parent present, which has been the policy in the press desk. But it just needed to be tweaked because I believe those numbers, the age was wrong. He also is asking for the parent illegal guardian to be present. If you pop down to where it does TLN, the strike through patrons will need to be in good standing if their home library group will be required. The change of the library privacy act makes that illegal. So we will not be doing, we weren't really doing that before we put it in there. And we're only doing that in extreme situations if we needed to, so we're taking that out. And because it is repeated with City of Troy, because City of Troy is a separate reciprocity agreement, so we're taking out of those two places. And then the last thing, under proof of employment on the second page. One of the ways that somebody who works in Independence or Clarkson can get a library card, we used to take work IDs. Unfortunately, just because you have an ID, that doesn't mean you necessarily still work there. So we're taking out that as a proof of working someplace. And then, oh, and the very last thing on the third page, under the fines and fees policy, we used to have a lost fee card, a cost of a dollar if you lost your library card. They do wear out from time to time and we felt that was not really fair to penalize the patrons for that. And also, the cost of printing those cards and producing those cards was, is way, way lower now, well under a dollar. So we are no longer charging for that. But we got out of there. Any questions about any of those updates?
So you're not doing, you're just setting a limit on how much they can be charged per day? So I'm sorry, you're just charging.
There was a cost of a dollar if you lost or damaged your library card and you wanted to replace your library card. And we're just taking out that fee. If you lose or damage your library card, we'll just replace it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, any more discussion about the circulation policy? If not, I will accept the motion to approve the updated circulation policy as presented.
I move that we accept the updated circulation policy as presented.
Okay, then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay. This is a big one, Julie. Your view of job description, salary ranges and wage, 2021 wages.
Each year during the budget process, the library board's staffing committee reviews DSLRT, which is the Detroit Suburban Library Roundtable Annual Library Statistical Data, considers changes to the organizational structure, job description, salary ranges and wages. This year, that process has been more involved as the pandemic has created a situation being called the mass resignation, in which employees in all fields are rethinking their priorities and making employment changes. Attracting and keeping good employees has become very difficult for nearly all employers. And as a result, many organizations are reworking their organizational structures and wages. And I'll review the situation in regards to the library and present the strategies and solutions being recommended by the library board's staffing committee for 2021 and 2022. So just to start off the conversation, we normally have a staff of 48 employees, 11 full-time and the rest are part-time. We have turned over 31 employees since June of 2020, which is unheard of for us. We don't turn over staff like that. That is mostly in our part-time staff. And some of the, some of the things that we're seeing, many library leaders are retiring or shifting fields or positions, thus creating vacancies for others to move up. Many part-timers are moving to full-time positions or evaluating their situation and deciding not to work at all. So some of those individuals might be people who were previously retired, or parents or other individuals who are providing a second income. And some of those people are just recalculating their finances and deciding they don't need to work anymore. Competition for employees is occurring in all professions. If library staff are able to find better-paying jobs in other fields, some of them are doing so. And so we, the staffing committee and I talked about this, our loyal employees need to be rewarded. While we did as much work from home as possible, many of our staff returned to some or all in-person work beginning as early as June or July of 2020, with a wide variety of safety protocols to accommodate curbside delivery and computer use and support. The first to return to in-person work for our custodial staff are IT team and our administrative staff. Next came our circulation and pages to help with curbside service. Then the technical services department processing the materials. And then the librarians answering questions and pulling materials. All staff have been incredibly innovative, patient and flexible. Several employees use the more flexible work hours and work from home time and the abundance of virtual learning opportunities for continuing education and to expand their knowledge base. And during staff shortages, employees were asked to pitch in on tasks outside their job descriptions to keep things running as smoothly as possible. Okay, so from that, just that's sort of a basic overview of where we are. The handout that I want you to start with is the one in your packet. It looks like this?
Yep.
Okay. So in this, you will see our regular, our current and, current minimum and current maximum ranges for the various positions for full-time. And in the blue is the DSLRT. So how do we do these DSLRT numbers? The first thing we do is DSLRT data is collected on all Class V libraries, 1 through 6. We are a Class V library. When we look at the data, we only look at the Class V libraries, so the libraries that are our size. From there, we make sure to take averages because there are a couple of libraries, Bloomfield, for example, that have a much, much, much larger budget than we do. And a couple of smaller libraries that have a much, much smaller budget than we do. So we take these averages in order to determine these ranges. The next thing we do is compare this data to the libraries that are very close to us in size. So that includes Orion Township, which is very close to us geographically and is similar. Their budget is slightly larger than ours. And also some other Class V libraries like Brighton and Celine, which have nearly the exact same budget that we have. And then from that point, we kind of know where we stand. So in 2020, we actually did not make any changes to the ranges at all because we didn't really need to. We were spot on. And since then, we are seeing libraries making significant changes, obviously, as you can see that we are out of alignment with these other numbers. The next one in your packet is the part-time wages. The part-time wages are done as hourly wages as opposed to salary ranges. And same thing, we use that DSLRT data and we do a lot of comparing our numbers and taking averages and making these calculations. And so the 2020 numbers are in blue and the ones in the center, in the white, are our current numbers. And so this is the data that we were working with.
Julie, just so everybody knows, explain what DSLRT means.
Okay. It's the Detroit Suburban Library Roundtable, so it's libraries in southeastern Michigan. And it is a fairly wide swath, as I said, it goes all the way out to Celine and it does go in, if not just Oakland County, it is definitely further afield than that. But it is the suburban metro area, so it does not take me into consideration the teeny tiny libraries that are up in the Upper Peninsula and that sort of thing. It is really the libraries that are closely surrounding us. So the last form that's in your, in your packet, this one is the one that shows the proposed ranges for each of the positions, the full-timer on top as salary ranges, the part-timer on the bottom as hourly wages. There are a couple of things in the, in this particular, a couple of changes that I'm going to talk about. The first one, oh, first of all, are there any questions about any of these ranges? No? So the next thing I want to talk about is specifically some of our employees. One of them is a change in position. So it is a change in title and also a change in job description and a significant change in wage range. And that would be what used to be our lead custodian, which would now be known as our facilities coordinator. As you know from the past few years, that is a person who had been a full-time custodian and over the course of time, we have been adding to her cap list and helping her to develop into a department head. Over the course of the last year and a half, she has proven that she is more than ready to take that completely over. And so the staffing committee and I have decided to recommend changing not only her title, but also the range and giving her a significant increase. During COVID, she literally took on the responsibility of following the CDC sanitation guidelines, making sure that we had all the appropriate documentation for all of the cleaning supplies that we were required to have, making sure that we had masks on hand, making sure that we bought gallons and gallons of antacancer, fielding the questions of both the staff and the public about their cleaning practices, making sure that there was a whole system to track how often various rooms got cleaned. She just was an absolute actor through that whole process. So we're recommending a change to that position and making her at this time a full department head.
Which will then ease up anything that you had to more closely see.
Absolutely. She took a whole lot off of my plate over the course of the last year. I never could have made it through the pandemic with all these special requirements if she had not been right there by my side helping me with all of that stuff. I would say to her, there's a new requirement. And she'd say, okay, email it to me. And I would email it to me, to her, and she would read through it and she would ask me any questions she had. And I would help her interpret anything and then she would take care of it. She would order what she needed, order document, what she needed documented, explain to the staff if they asked questions. We would talk about it and then I would announce it to the staff as a formal change in whatever protocol was done. So incredible amount of support was needed in order to execute all of those things. Previously, that would have been on me. Okay. So one of the things that we are struggling with that I alluded to earlier in the conversation was the fact that we are seeing a depletion in the number of part-time employees that are available to us. And essentially, libraries are just stealing part-timers from each other at this point because there's only so many of them to go around. I feel the way that we can sort of overcome some of this is by making a commitment and hiring some additional full-time staff. So I have brought to the table two, two full-time positions that I would like to talk about. The first one is the school outreach librarian, which is a position that we had put into the budget in 2020 and the board had approved and we had posted it literally the week before the pandemic hit. And they sent everybody home and sent all the kids home and we decided that maybe we didn't need to fill that position right then. And so we took it out and we took it out of the budget in 2021, not knowing when we would need to put it back in. So I have recalibrated everything and I would like to put that position back in and I would like to hire that position. I've also been evaluating a lot of the issues we've had with turnover in our librarians, our adult services librarians. And one of the things we're really struggling with in the profession is that many adult services librarian positions are very specific. So business librarian, for example, is our full-time position. We have a head of adult services, we have a business librarian. There are a lot of librarians out there who are very skilled at information services, at helping patrons, at doing one-on-one point-of-service training, those kinds of things. There are not full-time positions out there for those people necessarily. And we do have some great people on staff who do those exact tasks. And there are a number of them out in the world that would love to have a position like that. And so I am proposing that we start to change the tone of the profession and go back to saying, yes, we value you with this skill set. And we believe you should be able to have a full-time position as well and not just have multiple part-time jobs at number of libraries. So I am asking for the ability to post for somebody whose primary responsibility would be as a desk librarian. Now, that doesn't mean they're going to spend eight hours a day on the desk, because anybody who's been a librarian over a long time would sit on the desk. But that they would be the anchor, that they might put in an hour or two in the morning, do some off-deck tasks, like collection development and reading, come back and do a couple more hours, go off and have another break and then maybe have another hour and a half. So probably five to six hours a day on the desk, depending on, depending on their ability and the rest of the other staff and whatever. But the whole idea that that person would be the anchor, would be kind of the go-to person who would know some of those resources better than anyone else and could also help make sure that the other librarians understand how to use those various resources. So not, not just doing desperate, but really being an information services anchor at that desk. Any questions about that? Nope?
All right.
Okay. On item two, I think we have, we have three motions here, assuming that you would approve what Julie is proposing. I would first ask for a motion to approve the job descriptions that we discussed.
I move that we approve the job descriptions as presented.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. So the job descriptions, which mainly is the change from lead custodian to facilities coordinator, which is something I've been advocating for quite some time. And let's see that. I'm paying a second motion to approve the salary ranges as discussed, as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Okay, the salary ranges as presented, as presented, moved and seconded. In further discussion on that item. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, the third motion, I will accept a motion now to accept the 2021 wages as presented.
Jan, before you do that, would you like me to talk a little bit about the money between now and the end of the year?
Yeah, it's, sure.
Let me just toss that in there really quickly before you make a decision on that. I would propose that we would do this at the October 29th payroll, based on the salaries that I, or the wages that I distributed to you. So where is that money coming from and how are we going to make that work between now and the end of the year? Because there's some increases and there's some corrections that need to happen. The first thing that I wanted to point out from the second quarter report was the fact that we were actually $31,726 under budget in full-time wages. Much of that has occurred because we had empty positions that were, we could not fill for a period of time while we did interviewing and all of that. We also had $6,220 under budget in our part-time wages. And we have $20,887 in undesignated revenue. So how would, how are we going to tackle all of this to make sure there's enough money between now and the end of the year? So what I would propose is that you go ahead and approve these corrections at tonight's meeting to take effect on October 20th, the payroll of October 29th, that gives me some time to get everything updated and executed. The third quarter report was not in in time for me to have it as part of the meeting this evening. It should be ready soon. I already know, I'm not to know that we are under budget in those same line items, but at that point, I will know the exact amounts and the amount that we would need to make those adjustments. We are financially able to do that, though. I've also been working with the staffing committee and we know that for 2022, we are able to put those positions, the two, the two full-time positions that I'm requesting into the budget without any issue at all. And also cover the corrections for the wages that I have proposed. We would see a slight increase in terms of our percentage out of the budget. So usually, we try to keep that between 55 and 65%. We've been hovering just below 60, at 59%. All of these changes as, as presented would take us up to 62%, including all wages and benefits.
Which is well within the average.
Well within the average. And the staffing committee did look at the DSLRT numbers and we actually have been lower than most libraries in terms of that. Most of them are hovering right around 62 or 63%.
Yeah, I, I wanted to hold the line, but I understand what, what is required if we want to have good people that will stay here. And we've got to have these wage corrections and salary ranges.
Or we're just going to be a revolting door.
Right. So I think all three of us saw that. All right, I guess the motion would be to approve the 2021 wage corrections effective October 29th.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, you got that, Nicole?
I got it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay. That was a big one. I think that's, that's a vital thing for us.
Yeah, luckily, we've had time for the staffing committee to look at it and be able to recommend that that makes it easier than.
Meeting conversations.
That's going to bring back some stability that's been here for some time. Okay.
And it's also enabled us to reward some people.
Yes, really.
Oh, yeah. In particular, Arlene always comes to mind because she just so rose to the occasion.
I couldn't have done it without her. I absolutely couldn't have done it without her.
Well, and she's done a great job with her staff. Yeah.
Item three, is there any more discussion, Julie, in any more?
I just, I'm asking for permission to post those new positions. I broke that out in case in that item previously, you had decided not to do that, so. I broke that out in case in that item. Previously, you had decided not to do that, so.
Okay. I will then accept a motion to approve the postings for an information librarian and school outreach librarian.
I'll move that we approve the posting of those positions.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded, that we approved the posting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay. Okay, we've got to work that out for you now.
All right. I do, a lot of work, a lot more work to do between now and the twenty ninth. Okay.
All right, number four, approval of half rebate process.
Okay, this happens every year. I'm just going to remind you, this is the fourth year we've gone through this. On September first, the library received a letter from HAP informing us that we would be receiving a rebate as part of the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. And just as a reminder, HAP is our insurance plan that covers our full time employees. The library's rebate is two thousand ninety dollars and thirty eight cents and must be used toward healthcare. We also received this rebate the last four years and we're post handling in a similar way. And just as a reminder, there is a letter that explains it. But essentially, HAP is required by the Affordable Care Act to provide a certain amount or to put a certain amount of the money from premiums toward education of the people who are in the plan. And if they do not do that, then they need to rebate some of that money. So that's what they're doing. So we have deposited the check into budget line seven one six, which is our health insurance, to hold the funds until distribution can take place. As in the past, we've proposed distributing these funds based on the division of contributions toward healthcare premiums. In this case, the library contributes eighty percent and the employees contribute twenty percent. The library portion will be used toward future healthcare premiums and the employee portion will be divided and returned to the employees through a one-time reduction of their payroll deduction for healthcare premiums. Last year, we divided the employee amount, twenty percent of the rebate, by the number of employees enrolled in the program in two thousand and nineteen, taking into consideration the number of months they were enrolled in the plan if they were not a participant for the full year. We made a one-time reduction of your healthcare contribution in the calculated amount. This method provides appropriate documentation that the funds are being used for healthcare. Since healthcare premium contributions are pre-taxed, this distribution method ensures the funds are returned the same way they were contributed and are subject to appropriate taxes upon return. This distribution method was approved by the accountant and the auditor as adhering to the rebate guidelines in terms of use and documentation. This distribution can take place during the next payroll. I would propose handling this two thousand and twenty distribution using the same strategy to be executed through the next payroll. And I can't do it without your permission.
Any discussion, questions about?
Now, as complicated as it sounds.
It's not really.
It's not, but it's just that you have to, to re-explain the process so that we understand why they have to be done this way.
And every year the check comes and I think, can't you just spend the money that we're supposed to spend?
Apparently not, because this could go around for as many years as I can remember.
Yes, this is our fifth year doing it, I believe. It gets smaller every year, though, which means they're doing better every year, but they're still not quite there. The first year was like four thousand dollars. They get a little closer every year. Any questions about that process?
In that case, I will accept a motion to approve the distribution plan for the half rebate as presented.
I move to approve the half rebate process.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Approval of half renewal.
This one is, this one is surprisingly easy, actually, I think. The current plan that is half twelve hundred gold PPO, the premium for the renewal of this plan will be reduced by four point six four percent. Because this is an age rated plan, the premium will go up by two point nine one percent due to the aging of the current participants. This results in an overall change in the premium of this plan as a reduction of one point seven three percent. The staff has been satisfied with this plan and given the stability of the pricing and his recommendation that the board renew the current plan.
That's amazing to see.
I know. I was, I was really expecting it to go up. Last year, it actually went down because they were providing a COVID discount.
Right.
So they've taken the COVID discount out. We don't get that anymore and it's still going down one point seven three percent.
And I expected that they would recoup the COVID.
I really thought that too. You and I were thinking the same thing. When I came, I was like, really? Okay. I'm, I'm now we're going to wait for that other shoe to drop next year, I suppose.
Well, I know, but then you get another year in a really good rate.
And we get another year.
And, and no need to shove around if you're, if it's going down and you're happy with the service.
Yeah, I would agree. So this one, you just need to make sure that as you approve it as presented, you need to authorize me to sign the paperwork on behalf of the library.
Yeah, I was going to say that whoever makes that motion, be sure to make that part of your motion. Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the half twelve hundred dollar gold PPO plan as presented and authorize the library director to sign the paperwork on behalf of the library.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? All right. Got that one. Discussion of Sunday hours.
Okay. At the September meeting, the library board continued the closure of the library on Sundays until a full complement of staff could be hired to assure proper staffing levels with the decision to revisit the discussion on October eleventh, which is today. So we have our business librarian in place. We have our head of children's and teen services in place. That puts us back to a staff of eleven full timers. So that's a full complement of staff. We're short a couple of part timers, but we seem to be doing okay coverage wise. So I believe at this point, we would be okay to reopen on Sunday. I know, amazing. So it's up, it's, what is the pleasure of the board in terms of timing?
This is really better.
Yeah, I've been getting a lot of people asking me about.
Yeah, we are too.
So let me look really quickly. This Sunday is the seventeenth. Perfect. The staff, the staff is prepared for it. They've been told. We wrote the October schedule. I said, all right, let's, let's write the schedule and see if we can make it work. And there was no whining, so.
Good. But it's one of those.
That's always inside guessing. I'm working, so he says.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, we, we, it was very generous of the board to let us do that because we really felt like we were stretching the staff pretty thin, given that we had turned over so many employees. So we really appreciate that. We appreciate the patience of the public for, for hanging in there with us while we did that. And I know there are a lot of other businesses that are not open on Mondays or Tuesdays or, you know, short hours, whatever. We've tried really hard to stay open as much as we possibly can. And we have those positions in place. It will become even easier with the addition of these two full time employees. So that will increase the positions.
You're asking us to approve the reopening on Sunday through May or June or whatever.
Just, just to, to, let's see, the best way to do that would be just to reinstate standard Sunday hours starting.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'll move that we reinstate the standard Sunday hours effective this coming Sunday, October seventeenth.
All right, then moved to seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, you're open.
Thank you.
Okay, snow cloud quotes?
Yeah, that's in the packet of manuals because it actually, the RFP closed on Friday. This one's actually pretty easy, too. So we got two, two quotes or two bids. One is from Michigan Outdoor Services and as you know, we do that sort of a la carte penage with our, per push on the parking lot, per push on the, or per application on the salt, per push on the sidewalks, per application on the salt for the sidewalks, and then the safety cap as well, which is secondary. And that would be for Michigan Outdoor Services, if they were to do one full complement, would come up seven oh five. Warner Brothers Services of Waterford, they were the other one. Their prices are significantly higher. One entire push for them, if it were one and a half to six inches, would be one thousand two hundred and eighty or from six, six point one inches to twelve inches is one thousand three hundred and eighty. So the low bid is Michigan Outdoor Services. I did put the two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty one numbers in there so you can see, and it is going up. It was in, up until two thousand and twenty one, six fifty. You'll notice where the price increases are is not in the push, but in the salt.
I was surprised that the salt price was as low as it was last year.
Yeah, well, and, and you may remember that Michigan Outdoor Services was awarded the contract in two thousand and nineteen and the two thousand and nineteen, twenty, twenty season. And shortly after being approved for that contract, reached out to the board and said he was willing to give us a two-year contract at the same price. And so the board voted on that separately after the fact and extended it to two thousand and twenty, through two thousand and twenty one. So that is expiring at the end of this month, so.
Okay, so what motion do we need, Julie, just to, to?
Approve a.
Award, award the?
Award the contract to the low bidder, which is Michigan Outdoor Services.
All right, I will accept such a motion.
I'll make such a motion.
I'll second such a motion.
Nicole, are you okay with that?
I got, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. I was worried this time.
Okay, is there any further discussion or new business? In that case, I will accept a motion to adjourn, and I can't make it.
How many more? We made a motion that we could vote on the next one.
Oh, sorry.
We have to vote a motion.
Motion on the hard.
Thanks, Allison, for catching that. All in favor of the approving the?
Michigan Outdoor Services.
Michigan Outdoor Services, aye, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Now.
I, I will make that motion on your behalf.
All right, thank you. The motion, the motion as seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? We are adjourned at seven fourteen.
Good times.